3.0, I had to forget how to say that. Open session, 7:00 PM. Open session for board meeting, 16:12 is called to order. 3.01 is any additions, deletions, corrections, or modifications. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
3.02 is approval of the agenda and pledge of allegiance. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Andrew, second by Jen. Motion passes 6-0. Oh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any objections? Okay, 6-0. We don't always have to be perfect, right? Okay, pledge of allegiance. We would like to invite our students Olive and Robbie from Sappington, and any other students to come forward and help us with the pledge of allegiance. And then 4.0, we'll move into special recognitions, the learning report, and student representative report. 4.01 is Sappington Elementary Special Recognitions. And tonight, we're recognizing Sappington. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Parker, who's the principal, and Ms. Werner, who's the assistant principal.
We are extremely excited to recognize two of our Sappington students as well as two of our staff members. So I am going to start first with Olive. Olive, if you can come forward, please. Olive is a 4th grade student at Sappington. She is described as kind, generous, ambitious, and a good friend. She's an outstanding student who participates daily in all classes. She constantly helps peers and teachers. And you also are a great example of showing our Sappington four pillars of character at all times. Olive not only works hard, but she also encourages others to do their best. We are so proud of you, Olive.
Olive, congratulations. We have a certificate recognizing you as student of the month. And then we have a graduation.
Next, I would like to call up Robbie, who is a 5th grade student at Sappington. Robbie is described as a phenomenal student and human. He always goes above and beyond for others in and outside of the classroom. Robbie always tries his best, he stays curious, problem solves, he's polite, and he's friendly to all. He is someone who wants everyone to feel included inside and outside of the classroom. Robbie is a game changer with a bright future ahead of him. We are so proud of you, Robbie. Next, we would like to recognize Sappington Support Staff Person of the Year, Robin Gordon. This is Robin's 4th year in our district, and she is one of our peer professionals. She is excellent at everything she does and all that she brings to Sappington. She is always calm and collected while having a great sense of humor. Robin supports our students no matter what. She's always going above and beyond what is asked. Her job isn't easy, but she does it with grace and humility. We are so fortunate to have you on our Sappington team supporting our students. And next, we would like to recognize Mrs. Rebecca Keller, Sappington's Teacher of the Year. Rebecca is a kindergarten teacher, and this is her 22nd year in the district. Rebecca is a dedicated and loving teacher who radiates joy. She has a sunshine attitude and positive relationships with all students. She makes every student in her classroom feel valued, heard, and loved. Rebecca is exceptional at creating a family environment in her classroom, and she teaches life lessons in meaningful ways. She's not afraid to jump in and work hard for the benefit of our entire school. She has unwavering commitment to student success and a nurturing approach, and is always looking at the bright side. On top of that, she teaches kindergarten and never appears tired. How is that? Rebecca is a shining example of excellence in teaching. Congratulations, Rebecca.
It's only 17 minutes. You'll be fine. It's only 17 minutes. You'll be fine. As you know, my name is Dr. Tekeisha Parker, and I am the proud principal of Sappington Elementary. We are extremely excited to share all the amazing things that's happening at Sappington. It is my honor to begin with our student growth. As you know, it is very important for every single one of our students to demonstrate growth throughout their time at Sappington. This year, we are proud to share that 50% of our students in every grade level has shown growth in both our reading and math benchmarks. Kindergarten 1st and 2nd grade... Thought that was my timer. Kindergarten through 2nd grade, their benchmark assessment was FastBridge. For instance, 88% of our 1st grade students demonstrated growth in their reading from fall to winter. 3rd through 5th, they were assessed in NWEA for reading. As you can see, 78% of our students in 4th grade demonstrated growth. The next column represents math. Again, at least 50% of our students in every single grade level demonstrated growth with their winter benchmark. Kindergarten through 2nd, we looked at I-Ready. As you can see, 92% of our kindergartners demonstrated growth in their I-Ready math. As you can see, 86% of our 3rd grade students demonstrated growth in NWEA math. With CBM, one of Sappington's compass goal is for at least 80% of our students in grades 2 and 3 to demonstrate low risk or advanced on their CBM assessments by the spring. Look at our winter. We've already met that goal. 85% of our 2nd graders and 83% of our 3rd graders are identified as low risk or advanced on their CBM assessments. And we're not stopping there. We're gonna continue to push forward. We attribute this growth to our amazing teachers who work together collaboratively, speaking with special school district partners, looking at interventions, progress monitoring, and our school-wide data team meetings where we look at student groups, and we identify barriers and resources that could prevent the growth that we want to see. And also our district data team days, where teams of our teachers, they get to identify their focus area, and they also come up with a plan that is in support of our standards and our student growth. Next slide, sorry.
And I am Mrs. Stephanie Werner. I am Dr. Parker's right-hand sidekick to all things. It is my joy and my honor to present to you about our student achievement at Sappington. First, Sappington is an amazing school, and I'm lucky to be there, so thank you for that. As you can tell here with our student achievement, we are only... Keep in mind, we're only at 45% of the school year completed when we did these assessments. And so as you can tell, our 3rd through 5th grade students, 56% of them are in the high or high-average achievement on the winter benchmark for reading, and 52% are in the high or high-average achievement category on the winter benchmark for math. Yeah, way to go! We're not gonna stop, but we will continue pushing. And additionally, we have our I-Ready math for K through 2 students. Keeping in mind, 45% of the school year has passed. 49% of them are at or above grade level. That's fantastic. In the graphic below, you can see that our I-Ready math data is showing student progress towards their annual typical growth per grade level, and they are making wonderful progress towards that growth measure, metric that they are supposed to be meeting. So this is all showing really great, amazing things. We attribute this success to the many collaborative efforts with our team. Our teams meet weekly in CLTs. We have those data team meetings. We have MTSS meetings that address these issues. And in addition to our board-approved data days, which allow us to dig deeper as teams and really make action steps and plans for each student. So thank you for that. Next slide.
For the I-Ready math, it says the 49% of students that are at or above grade level, is that like for this part of the year? Or does that mean like by the end of the year? Do you know what I'm saying?
This graphic is showing for the... Towards the end of the school year.
Thank you.
It is important that we equip all of our students with essential skills to carry them throughout and beyond Lindbergh schools. We have an amazing counseling department. Looking at the needs of our students and our families, our counselors decided to host a social-emotional learning family night. This was an opportunity to engage our families as well as partner with them. Families were working alongside their student on social-emotional learning activities, and they were also able to have a take-home kit to support their social-emotional learning. For National School Counseling Week, our counselors shared with our families their stats for the year. As you can see, many classroom lessons, many small groups, and many check-ins. Our counseling department does a wonderful job of supporting our students so that we can meet the needs of the whole child.
We all know the importance of our staff taking steps to prioritize their well-being. The Lindbergh Wellbeing Program supports and incentivizes staff to take care of themselves. Throughout the last year, 67% of our Lindbergh staff have participated at Sappington. 26 of those individuals also earned 100 points or higher in the past school year, which is wonderful. That's a great incentive for them. In addition to this, beginning in 2025 in January, our Wellbeing Advocate decided and created a plan to increase partnership in a little friendly competition among our staff, which allowed us to include not only our Lindbergh-Sappington staff, but our SSD staff and some otherwise ineligible people to participate. With your support, we can continue to encourage our staff to prioritize their health and well-being.
Our ultimate goal is for our students to have a satisfying experience throughout their time at Sappington. What's our why? Our students. Do you believe that furniture plays a role in that? Over the summer, our library received all-new furniture thanks to our Sappington Parent Teacher Group. It's mobile, flexible, durable, and it allows opportunities for collaborative groups to work as also it allows the opportunity for independent students and students to work independently. Small groups can also come in the library and not disturb any library lessons because of the flexible seating options and also our movable furniture. We absolutely love it. It's important for our students to have student voice and choice as they are working to meet our priority standards. In art, our art teacher asked our 1st grade students to create character expressions using basic shapes. And as you can see, this 1st grade student is very proud of her work. I'm sure she can tell you a story about each one of those characters, but because of that, she feels empowered in her learning. Our MySci program supports our science standards. It's hands-on, engaging, it encourages problem-solving, and it's centered around the four Cs. Our ultimate goal is for all of our students to have a satisfying experience throughout their time at Sappington.
And speaking of voice and choice, I'm excited to share about one of the ways that our staff exemplifies personalized learning. As you can see here, there's a 5th grade data binder. This allows students to work alongside their teachers in a collaborative team to be able to look at their benchmark assessment data, their unit assessments as well. And they can work on creating a goal and an action step for them. This is one way to make that learning meaningful to each individual student. This is one way to personalize, but there's many examples throughout our whole school. This helps our students... Sorry about that. This helps our students to develop a sense of agency and ownership of their learning.
We thank you for listening to our report. We're excited about everything Sappington. We are so proud of our Sappington teachers for their hard work and dedication to our students. And we appreciate you as the board supporting us in all that we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Nine?
Nine.
Okay. That's it? Nine, not 17?
Now, I'm guessing that Dr. Parker did not inform you that you would also stay for the student representative report. However, you're gonna get lucky tonight. Our student was unable to be here. He's actually doing the winter musical, so...
He's the lead in the musical.
I just wanted to make a comment too. It was so apparent how much your community loves Sappington, and we're so happy, and like, just... So thank you for sharing with us.
Yes, yes, thank you. So if you would like to read RJ's report, it's in our board docs, and board docs are public for you to look at. And now, if you would like to leave, this is your time before we start to conduct business. We ask that you kind of hurry out, take photos out there, so we can get home too. And thank you for coming out on this very cold night. We appreciate it. Okay, 5.0 resolutions. We have one this evening, National School Social Work Week Resolution. Do I have a motion to approve the National School Social Work Week Resolution as presented? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Megan, second by Andrew. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes 6-0. 6.0, Citizen Communications Regarding Agenda Items. At this time, we do not have any. So we'll move on to 7.0 Communications. Calendar of Events, Ms. Vetter.
Thank you. Welcome back to school, everyone. Lindbergh High School presents Little Women: The Musical, and that's going on now through February 22nd. So please go support the theater program and see that. February 25th is the High School Night of Orchestras. The Student Life Board Advisory meets on February 27th. March 3rd is the Lindbergh High School Night of Bands. And March 4th is Middle School Night of Bands. Facilities Advisory will meet March 5th. There is a Lindbergh High School Choir Concert on March 6th. The League of Women Voters will be here to facilitate a Board of Education Candidate Forum on March 10th at 6:30 PM. Finance Advisory will meet on March 11th. Then we're back here for our board meeting on Thursday, March 13th at 7:00 PM. This meeting is open to the public. And as a reminder, that school will be closed March 14th and March 17th through the 21st for spring break.
Thank you very much. 7.02 is Report of Meetings, and that's where any board members can share meetings that they attended. Anybody? Lots of snow, lots of snow days, lots of cancellations.
Last Thursday, Jen and I were at the parent leadership meeting with the parent leaders. A well-attended meeting. Always impressed with the volunteers.
Excellent. All right, we shall move along. 7.03 is Announcements, Ms. Vetter.
We have one announcement for the Board of Education Candidate Forum. The League of Women Voters will be here to facilitate a Board of Education Candidate Forum on Monday, March 10th at 6:30 PM, where the community will have the opportunity to submit questions to the candidates. This is open to the public and will be recorded for viewing on the district's YouTube channel. Patrons can submit questions for candidates in person that evening or by using the link provided on the St. Louis League of Women Voters website. A link to the League's website can be found on the forum calendar event on the district's website calendar.
And 7.04, Review of Upcoming Board of Education Meetings. Again, Ms. Vetter.
Yes, we will meet again on Thursday, March 13th at 7:00 PM for our regular board meeting. Tentative agenda items are our regular business items, approval request of tonight's policies first reading. And Concord Elementary School and the Idea Center are scheduled to be here for recognitions and to present their learning report. These meetings are open to the public, and we always encourage people to attend.
Thank you very much. 7.05 is the MSBA Board Report, which we will now watch on our screens.
The February edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look at the governor's State of the State Address last month. On January 28th, Governor Kehoe delivered his first State of the State Address, which laid out his legislative agenda. Securing Missouri's future was the theme of Governor Kehoe's address. Governor Kehoe's budget recommends a $200 million increase for the foundation formula and over $370 million to fully fund the state's commitment to school transportation needs. For teachers, the budget includes $33 million to fund teacher salaries. While the governor does recommend a $200 million increase to the foundation formula, that still leaves it underfunded by $300 million.
You're going to hear it in the media, so you might as well hear it from me first. While it's clear our support for K through 12 education is a record investment and the largest we've ever seen, we are not fully funding the formula. And while we are committed to making good on the funding commitments passed by the legislature last year, this budget does not include an additional $300 million liability that was imposed on us by an administrative body.
The governor is also asking for $50 million in state general revenue for school vouchers and $7 million for capital improvements at charter schools. The combination of an underfunded foundation formula coupled with a diversion of funds to charter schools and unaccountable voucher programs is concerning. MSBA's chief advocacy officer, Brandt Shields, says that with so much talk around ed reform, MSBA will be spending a great deal of time focusing on education funding and accountability.
Coming out of 727, priority number one has to be education funding. Absolutely. You know, one of the promises that was made as they were expanding school choice last year and prioritization, and their selling point to many members who were kind of uneasy about voting for 727 is, but don't worry, public education is going to get so much more money out of this. So, I mean, we are here to say, we are here to make sure that education is fully funded. We believe that the best accountability for schools happens at that local level. And we get very concerned when hard-earned tax dollars that come from our citizens, and they go to places that are not held to that same level of accountability. And we want to make sure that if a dollar is going out from the state, whether it goes to a public school or a private school through an ASA or a charter school, that they are held to high, high standards.
The governor's executive budget recommendations are the starting point for the legislative appropriation process. MSBA is now working with legislators to support MSBA's priorities as they involve funding beyond the governor's recommendations for public education. As the appropriation process now begins, your advocacy efforts will be essential to protect funding for Missouri's public school students.
You know your district best. You know how policy is going to impact you at a local level. And making those personal connections for legislators is really the opportunity to impact. Because when Brandt goes and has conversations with them, he's offering a statewide perspective, which is important. But most often, those emotional, personal conversations about your local communities is what's going to sway the mindset of a legislator.
As the legislative session progresses, we will keep you updated on these developments again this year through our Legislative Voice newsletter sent to members via email each Friday during the session, through critical issue alerts, and MSBA's Spring Advocacy Series. The Spring Advocacy Series helps you connect the classroom to the Capitol and make an impact in shaping education policy. The large class of freshman legislators in the Missouri House and Senate means your insights as a local school leader will be critical, and your connections can make the difference. Log on to Advocacy Lunch and Learns for the latest updates in the legislative session, and plan to attend MSBA's Advocacy Day and Student Showcase with your school board to meet your legislators at the Capitol on March 11th. For more information about all of these events, visit the MSBA website. MSBA is also pleased to sponsor School Board Recognition Month in March. It's a great opportunity for school districts and communities to recognize the great work of school board members and the important role local boards of education play as leaders of our public schools. Visit the MSBA website for ideas to celebrate and materials created to help recognize the vital role these public officials play in the education of Missouri's children. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in March for the next MSBA Board Report.
Okay, thank you, Brent. Appreciate that. 8.0, Special Reports. 8.01 is Cabinet Updates. Joelle, would you like to start?
We had our Finance Committee meeting this week online. It was Tuesday, so that's 5:00 PM. We had good participation, a lot of bids this meeting. So you can see that in the consent agenda. We have a lot of stuff coming in for the projects. And so that was a good majority of it. Law and Service RFP was also in there. We have more properties now. And so we wanted to go ahead and get some new pricing on that. Scott did a thing where with this bid, he's having some Saturday-only mowing, which will help out with, you know, testing with parent lawnmower confusion in the driveways and things like that. So that's something new that I think the buildings will appreciate. It was a good meeting, and it was quick.
Is that it?
Facilities, like Megan said, that's meeting on March 5th, yep.
Okay. Next, Dr. Sparks.
So, student life has not met since our last board meeting, but teaching and learning has met twice since our last board meeting because of snow days in early January... A snow day in early January. So at our first teaching and learning meeting, we focused on the Lindbergh Reading Success Plans, which are our plans that are written to support students who need additional support in reading in order to get to grade level. We were able to show parents and members of the committee two different iterations, last year's iteration, of what those success plans look like, as well as this year's, and gather feedback on what's clearer, what is helpful communication for parents to know as we are working with their children on reading proficiency. And then in our most recent Teaching and Learning Board Advisory, we focused on the Standards-Based Learning and Grading Survey that went out as a part of our 8th through 12th grade Standards-Based Learning Task Force. Through the task force, we determined that we needed to survey our students in grades 4 through 7 regarding how standards-based learning was working for them, how it's impacting their understanding of what they know and should be able to do, as well as their growth and their personal agency. And then also our parents... And then also our parents of students in grades second through seventh and then our teachers K-7. So our teaching and learning board advisory looked at that data and used that to have conversations about how do we support parents? How do we support middle school? How do we support elementary in order to continue to have success with standards-based learning?
Okay, thank you. Dominic?
In technology, we went over previous technology plans. We kind of looked at all of our previous ones to see if we were missing anything on our current plans. Like, for example, like teacher surveys specifically on technology. We also looked at where the technology goals fit into the current compass plan. So currently, right now, we're under teaching and learning. So we were looking at that, seeing if that's the best fit for that or if there's a better place for it. Some of the suggestions were it would be part of all of the other meeting or all the other departments that kind of put their stuff together. And one of the suggestions were that it would be, it would just align with the five strategic goals that we already have laid out in the compass plan. So those are the things we're looking at for that and we'll figure out where we're going to put them. But with the feedback, it was good feedback from them, so we'll put the technology goals and probably fit them into the strategic goals.
Very nice. Thank you. Thank you all. 9.0, Action Items by Consent. Does anyone wish to remove any of these items for individual consideration? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the February 20th, 2025 Action Items by Consent as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Matt made the motion. Megan seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes 6-0.
It's 5-0. I'm going to abstain.
Five, sorry, I forgot to ask for an abstention. That was my fault, I'm sorry. I do want to point out that we had a public gift within our Board Docs. It was from Arsenal Credit Union on Vogel Road, so we would like to thank them for their generous donation. 10.0 is Individual Action Items. There are none for this evening. 11.0 is Reports. 11.01 for the Record. We have one for the Record Report this evening. 11.01.01, Official 2024-2025 Enrollment Summary. Board members, you can direct any questions to Dr. McKenney. 11.02 Reports. There are no 11.02 Reports this evening. 11.03 is Review of Board Policies and Procedures. We have Board Policies. Okay, you guys ready? BB, BB-2, BDC, DFI-1, GCBA, IC-2, IGBI, IGCD, IGCDA, JEA, JED, JHDF, JO-1, Presented for the first reading this evening. Board members, if you have any questions, you can direct those to Dr. McKenney. These policies will be brought back at a further future meeting. There are no other 11.0 items, so we move to 12.0. 12.0 is Return to Closed Session. We've already conducted our closed session for business. There's no need to dismiss for that. So 13.0, Adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn Board Meeting 1612?
So moved.
Second. Andrew is the motion. Jen is the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes 6-0. Board Meeting 1612 is adjourned.